All right. Calling this April meeting of the AMS Board of Trustees to order at 6:38. We actually do have a pretty full agenda today and we are going to go into executive session. I would like to make a note that the meeting is being video recorded. So we will be going into executive session at the end to discuss pending litigation as well as strategies for negotiations with represented personnel. And we will not be coming back into open session. So let's review the agenda. Were there any changes to the agenda from any of the trustees? The main topic for today is going to be the budget for next year.
General looks good.
All right. So first item of business to look at last month's minutes and to approve those. I think in general, this is okay because we didn't -- I don't think anyone called in last time, so we didn't have to record individual votes. So votes should be okay.
I called in, but I got here.
But you got here. So by the time we had votes, we were -- we didn't have to do roll call votes. So it should be okay.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes from March 16th.
All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Great. So. We don't have any public comments. So Tom.
Okay, so this is the faculty report. First I'll say that the faculty is very much aware and appreciative of the hard work that has gone into building the schedule for next year. We -- from the information we have, it is far ahead of where it was at this time in the previous year. And it's shaping up to be a schedule that solves a significant number of the issues that have cropped up this year. We're looking forward to seeing the final copies in our hands, but we're doing so with anticipation. Yesterday, we had the NHS meeting and it's a reminder to the faculty as a whole that we entered into a month of celebration, a month plus of celebration. Seniors who are graduating, eighth grade is moving up to ninth grade. They have different field trips such as the World War II on Disney, going to Cape Cod. In many ways, it's a time where people tend to feel better about things. It's also, however, a time of very much hard work for the faculty. Courses are culminating facing the final exams. There's lots of work to be done. And so it's both exhilarating and sometimes agonizing this time of year. But we are happy that we're facing this moment in a frame of mind that owes a lot to the changes that have occurred. And we're feeling in general energized, rejuvenated. Just before April break, about three weeks ago, we had an election among the faculty for the representative to the Board of Trustees for next year. And I'm happy to announce that Ms. Brianna Murphy, who is over here, was the winner of that election. And she will be taking over for me after I gracefully run away in June. I've known her for a few years now. She was with me through some example contract negotiations. I have great respect for her. Is there anything else I should mention? I don't think so. So if I can't think of it, I'll stop right here.
Great. Any questions for Tom? Liz?
Actually, I just have a couple of quick acknowledgements from some parents who have reached out. One is over the trip last week to Europe. Just they were stating what a great time that their students had and they really appreciated the opportunity to go. So I just want to acknowledge Dr. Lewis and the staff that went. I know it was time away from your time off to do that. But it looks like it was a great trip. And selfishly, I will ask if we're going to continue those as someone with a middle school parent -- child. I'm hoping that they continue to have those types of opportunities. I know they have a couple of plans already for next year. So I'm hoping that those will continue in the future. Secondly, I just want to acknowledge the administration and the faculty for the outstanding National Honor Society ceremony last night. I know Chris and I were there. I don't know if anyone else was there, but it was a beautiful ceremony and a lot of teachers were recognized. Tom and Dr. Lewis were both recognized by a number of students. And so it was just a very nice ceremony. So I just want to let everybody know about that and publicly thank them for that. That's it from the parents. Everything is sort of quiet. I think everybody's trying to get to your end.
It was really striking how good all of the student speakers were.
Yeah, I would say that teacher acknowledgement session.
It was hardly an "ah" or an "ah" to be heard.
Yep. That's lovely. Great.
You weren't bad either, Dr. Lewis.
I would have liked to make that. I've gone the last couple of years and couldn't make it this year, but it's one of my favorite Let's move on to the ED report.
Okay. So as I did last night, I have 16-point font to look at because I'm slowly going blind. So first, I want to congratulate Ms. Murphy for being elected teacher representative. She's not only a fantastic history teacher, but a wonderful colleague too. And we're lucky to have her as our teacher rep. Thank you. So I have four points to cover today. First is in regard to the trip. I would like to thank all of the families who trusted us with their children as we flew off to Europe this past week for the World War II themed trip. As a parent of two kids, I know how difficult that might be to send your kids off to another country. I also want to thank all the kids who came, 45 in total. I was really happy to say -- happy to say that we left 45 and we came back with 45.
Was it the same 45?
It was the same 45. I was going to say that, you know, if we lost a couple, we could chalk it up to authentic war experience, but probably wouldn't go too well with parents. And I want to give a really, really special thanks to the chaperones, Brianna and Eli Breug, who were the leaders of the trip. Aaron McAdams, Matt Anderson, Peter Prue, and Bethany Bartolini. They did an incredible amount of work to prepare this, an incredible amount of work during the entire trip. And it was really an amazing trip. We started out in London. We traveled across the channel. We went to the beaches of Normandy, which was tremendously moving. We moved through France. We went to Cannes and Rouen. We went to Belgium. We went to Cologne, Germany, and eventually made our way to Berlin. And we had a very moving visit to Sachsenhausen concentration camp. And the kids were absolutely amazing at the camp. They really took it in and they realized the importance of it. It was a really fantastic experience. And to your point, Liz, I'm really optimistic that we can expand on this trip and provide further opportunities to do these things. And once again, I just really would like to congratulate and thank the chaperones. They did such an amazing job. I'll just provide you one example. When we were on the -- we were on a train, an express train from Cologne, Germany to Berlin, Germany, a very, very crowded express chain -- train. The Germans are very precise for their time. The door will open at such a time, it will close at such a time, and you have to get off the train. So we're taking -- we were on the train from Cologne to Berlin with 45 kids, all of their luggage dispersed across several of the cars. Lots and lots of people who were not terribly hospitable to teenage Americans. And, you know, we had three minutes to get off the train at this one certain stop. And it was like a work of art to watch the chaperones and to see that. We had walkie-talkies. It was like a SWAT team. It was really fantastic. So we're looking forward to providing more opportunities like that in the future. Ms. Waldron in the ELA department is going to be leading a trip to Japan. The history folks are already working on our next trip. It's in the works. So it's a great opportunity for the kids and it's a great opportunity for teachers to really experience what they talk about in the history class. So the second thing I wanted to mention today is to thank the entire staff for their tremendous effort during the DIS site visit that we had on April 13th. And I particularly like to thank Sarah Snow for her -- who's our Director of Accountability for all her tremendous hard work, as she does every single year. She makes it run as smooth as butter. Sarah was working late at night. She was working on the weekends, nonstop. She asks for little, she gives much. Thank you, Sarah. So we will be receiving a report in a few weeks. And I was thinking about what that report would look like. And in my mind, it is a tremendous opportunity. I am sure the report will be a little bit positive. I'm sure the report will be a little bit negative. I'm sure the report will be a little bit in between. Whatever it is, and I'm sure it'll be a mix of all of those things, it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity to receive feedback. It's an opportunity to receive criticism. And it's an opportunity to grow us as a school. And if we have a philosophy as a school that we welcome feedback, we welcome criticism, we welcome the opportunity to improve, that will really help us. So what the report says will be a tremendous opportunity to improve our school. The third thing I wanted to mention today is just to go back to the three core goals that I announced when I took this position back in February. And the three core goals were, one, improving our schedule, and Tom mentioned a bit about that, and providing a draft of that schedule by June. The second item was to improve our PD program so that teachers will see that AMS has a school where they can grow as professionals. And the third goal was to retain, place a very strong emphasis on retaining our teachers and our staff. So in regard to the first goal, Tom mentioned a bit about it. The first goal is the schedule. And I'm really, really happy to announce that the Scheduling Avengers has completed a draft of the lower school and upper school schedule. Just to remind everybody who the Avengers are, I'm trying to convince them to wear a costume. You know, it would be really great come September 1st when we start school, they have a cape and they come out and they have, you know, a mask and everything. Ladies and gentlemen, the Scheduling Avengers!
I take it they don't share your interests.
Yeah.
It would be great.
I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'd pay big money for that. I see a lot of nods around here. I sense a fundraising opportunity.
Chris, who knew?
Is it too late to add it to the budget?
So Padmish, Lino, Alvarez, and Monica are the core part of the Scheduling Avengers. And they have all worked around the clock to nights, weekends. They didn't have a break over the April vacation. They were in the kryptonite room, working incredibly hard. I got a call, we were out in Paris on day five of our trip or something, and Padmish called me and texted me and said, "We're done, we're done, we're done." It was absolutely fantastic. And they've worked really, really hard to do several really important things. And one thing they've worked hard to do is to reduce class size in the lower school, which they have done by adding, going from six sections in the lower school to seven sections. They've also greatly reduced transitioning of teachers from room to room, period after period. And they've also done a lot to minimize the possible number of consecutive classes that a teacher teaches. They've put a tremendous amount of thought into the struggle that each teacher goes through each and every day. And it's really a remarkable achievement. There are some teachers who will have to make a few sacrifices. That is certainly true. But overall, the cumulative impact of the schedule, I'm very confident will be, represent a really significant improvement from what it was last year. And they've done just a tremendous amount of hard work in listening, working with teachers, and appreciating what they have to say. So I think come June 1st, we'll be able to provide a draft of that schedule to all teachers. It will be a significantly better schedule than the one that we've had this year. But even more important than that, I think what Padmish, Lino, and Monica have done is that they've demonstrated what we can't do as a school if we work together as colleagues. They have demonstrated that we can do great things. And I thank them very much for that. So the second goal was improving the PD program. And at the -- the budget today covers part of the spending for the PD. So I'm confident that at the next board meeting, we'll have a policy in place and we'll have funding for the policy. There's basically three core components to it. One will be to expand the number of PD days that a teacher can take during the school year. So this past year, we had one. We're going to significantly expand that. There will also be a significant financial expansion in the amount of money dedicated to PD. And last but not least, there'll be a significant expansion in the autonomy that each department and each teacher has in selecting their PD. PD will not come from the top. It will come from the teachers and the departments themselves, the folks who know the content of which they teach. And the third goal that we discussed is teacher retention. And I've discussed this before, I'll discuss it again. At AMS, we value our teachers. And we believe the teacher turnover is not good academically for our students and it's not good for the morale of our staff. And my hope is that when we get to the end of the school year in mid-June, we will see a significant reduction in teacher turnover from last year. But I would definitely defer to Tom and to Brianna about the mood and the feelings of teachers. But I am optimistic that we'll be doing much better come June 15th. Last point, fourth and final point is simply a thought. Many of you probably saw the really nice headline we got from U.S. News and World Report. We were just ranked second-best high school in the state. And that is great news. And we can rightfully take pride in that. I think it's a testimony that despite all the many, many changes that we have faced as a school, one ED after another ED after another ED, the, what, the 25th ED in five years or so, the heart and soul of our school are the teachers and our staff, the guidance counselors, the support staff, the department chairs, the teachers. In the face of all of those changes, they have been the rock of our school. They have made our school what it is today. And we all owe our thanks to them for that. So while we acknowledge our accomplishments and we can all be very proud of the U.S. News and World Report, I also think it's important to reflect upon some of the ideas that have brought us to where we are today and to appreciate those ideas and to try to nourish those ideas and to continue to listen to those ideas. And there are two parts to the AMS Charter that I think about in particular, when I think about some of the ideas that have made us what we are. The first part is our preamble or our mission statement. And the mission statement, just I'm sure everybody's very familiar with it, but just to reiterate, the mission statement says that AMS will create an atmosphere of celebration of knowledge where children of all backgrounds and abilities excel in all subjects, especially in math and science and technology, empowering them to succeed in the workplace in our modern high-tech world. The second passage that particularly strikes me in the charter has to do with what the word "advanced" means in our charter. And this is what the passage states. "The advanced in the academy's name means that every student will become an advanced student. The academy's innovative educational approach will ensure that students previously considered not capable or underachievers will reach a level of knowledge that is currently considered only reachable by a few gifted and talented students. The middle achievers of the student population will find themselves enthusiastic, engaged, and passionate about learning. Those who are chronically under-challenged and bored will thrive." Both of those statements, I think, testify to a few things that I think AMS is at our very best. We are a school of no excuses. We are a school of high expectations. We are a school whose staff believes that each and every child will not simply pass courses and shuffle through our doors. Rather, we are a school whose staff believes that each and every child can grow, thrive, and excel. Thank you.
I hate having to follow this every month now. Any questions for Dr. Lewis? No?
No questions. I just want to say I think that's completely inspiring. I really do. It's fantastic.
I have a question, Dr. Lewis. What was your favorite part of the trip?
Oh geez.
You had to pick only one.
That's tough. I would probably say for me, it was the beaches of Normandy. Just to walk the beaches, we actually had the chance to take off our shoes and walk Omaha Beach and put our feet in the water and to look at the bluffs, to look at the channel, to pick up the sand. I picked up, I think we all did. Did you, Brianna? We all picked up sand and we put it in vials.
I have some at home now.
Oh, that's awesome, yeah. And I brought it home to my kids and I said, you know, "Give this to your kids." And it was fantastic. Yeah, it's very -- the whole trip was deeply moving, but there were also, you know, parts lots of fun when we were at the Eiffel Tower, the lunches that we had, the dinners that we had. So it was a mix of a lot of emotion, but also a lot of fun. And it was great to see the kids grow during the trip, you know, kind of the first day or two, kind of starstruck, looking at, you know, the airport and looking at the big cities and shuffling through the subways. But then by towards the end of the trip, you can kind of see how they grew and you can see the confidence and the self-assurance that they have, which was really fantastic.
Great. Okay. And now we're going to follow this topic with the really exciting topic of uniforms because that is next on the agenda. So I did circulate the draft uniform policy that the school has put together for the following year. There is also in your packet a draft poster that would be used to communicate it, but it is only the policy itself that we are voting on because that's what is going to appear in the handbook. Are there any questions about this? An earlier version had been circulated before the break, so we've had a chance to see this and reflect.
I just had the one question on the light blue shirts. Are they in? Are they out?
Yeah, so the light blue shirts are definitely being grandfathered out. And I did send your comment onto Ben just to --
Okay.
For clarification.
Is Lynn Zen doing away with the color or is AMS a?
No, we're just choosing to simplify the color scheme, but not -- people can wear them for the length of time they're still at the school.
Okay.
But we're just trying to make it so that eventually it's just white, navy blue, and khaki so that it's easier for us to enforce something. And it's also less formal and standard. So we just are asking that families not pass them down to younger siblings so that in six years, we can --
So then can we, can PTO not resell them or can we resell them or?
No, we'd rather they not.
That's, yeah, that's kind of a pain just because of all the changes. But, I mean, that's fine. I mean, overall, I think that the uniform policy is much better this year. I just think that we need to think about what doing away with colors means, especially because that's a huge fundraiser, not only for the PTO, but it's also a big money saver for parents. So just something to think about for the future.
Meaning what? I guess I'm not understanding. Meaning that they should be allowed or?
Meaning when you get rid of a color, no, but when you get rid of a color and you do away with it, that means you, the PTO can't resell it, which, you know, they're losing money and parents can't buy a used uniform.
I have tons of pinks and yellow shirts for many years that had to be basically discarded, hundreds of dollars just thrown down the drain.
Yeah.
So, okay, more light blue shirts out the way.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's not, for me personally, it's not a big deal in the sense, I only have one child and he'll probably grow out of it, you know, in another year or two anyway. But I just think that, you know, the overall, for, I'm thinking about the PTO and for people who do benefit from buying used uniforms if you can. That's my only thought.
The one question I want, just following up on what you said, Ben. When they go to Lands' End, they will be able to buy white and navy, and that's it. They will no longer be selling the blue shirt with AMS logo. Okay.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept the uniform policy?
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously.
So Lucy and I had a side bet that this would be the shortest uniform discussion we've ever had.
And was it? There you go.
I do, I was telling Liz I will miss those earlier conversations.
You will not miss them. We'll find something else. Okay, let's move on into chair business. So I want to acknowledge that we did receive a formal complaint alleging discrimination by the administration. And I have assigned a task force of Chris O'Keefe and Tom Taverna to investigate this. So they will report until it's finalized. Second on the list, oh, to talk about strategic planning and what we had talked about with trying to follow up our off-site planning meeting. And Chris, I'm going to need you to help, you know, sort of jump in here because Chris and Rick and I have been speaking with Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay about this. So in your, what, we've had, the board members had calls with Marcy Kornoff, I sit board on track, about how to do this. And her suggestion was, at this point, rather than just scheduling another session right away, why don't you take the opportunity to seek that broader input that you were looking for, that ideally we would like to have in order to inform a really robust discussion with input from all of our stakeholders. So I asked Dr. Lewis to put together a draft process on how we might think about soliciting that feedback. Who would that be from? You know, how many would there be? How would we want to do this? And that's what you have in your packets today, that this is a process, I guess, that was put together by Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay. And this is sort of the beginning of thinking about it. But the big thing here, and the three of us that talked to them agreed, that the big change here is that we really wouldn't kick this off until September, that what we would do between now and the end of the year, sort of refine the questions, like what it is that we would really want to ask. And then we would also take this opportunity to figure out who, how we would get these, this feedback. We may want to hire a facilitator, for example, to actually help to transcribe so that the participants could really, so that, you know, the school administrations could really sit and listen to the feedback and we have someone else running the meeting. And so that's, that's sort of where we ended up. Chris, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
So I did spend some time with a process So, I did spend some time with a process consulting firm that I think pretty highly of, that I mentioned here before, who did their early formative work in Northern Ireland. So, I figured if they could do that, they could handle us. And it was very interesting, the feedback that we got from them. So, I kind of reheard, you know, I went through our recent history as best I could, and they said, "Wow. You've been through a lot, and maybe you shouldn't be in such a hurry." Is that you should, that you want to think about consolidating the gains that you've made, and letting them sink in, and maybe for this year, what you want to do is have a party. And that, you know, you're really, you know, you've got time, things are different now, you want to really appreciate and nourish what you've got, and then move forward. And I think that the plan that Dr. Lewis and partners came up with is good in terms of what it's looking at. The feedback that I got, and my own sense of it as well, is that we're no longer in a place where we need to rely so much, I mean, we're going to do surveys, that's how we track, and that's how we remain accountable, but this is really about an inclusive conversation. And so, it's much more art than science, and it's more about us arranging things so that people can talk to each other in ways that are focused on our values, which is not really a conversation that survey instruments are particularly good at doing. Skillful, compassionate facilitators are, and that it would be worth investing in having a group of people doing that, and we can spend whatever time we need to selecting them, we've got some ideas, because everyone at the school deserves an opportunity to participate in the conversation. You can't facilitate a conversation and participate in it. It just can't be done. And so, if we have somebody who is, who we can trust, who can lead us through it, then it's really much more a matter of, I think, consensus emerge than there are tools for doing that, rather than kind of totting up who voted for what, and building a plan off that.
That's where the primary points are. So, I wanted to open this up for discussion for the full board on, you know, reactions to this.
So, I'll jump in. So, I think it looks great. A couple comments on the top of page two, where we talk about what does a wildly successful AMSA need to do in order to enable our teachers, students, and parents to fulfill AMSA's vision. So, the two, the first two points, point one and two, get at what that vision is relative to school culture and academic program, and then it is appropriate then to turn away from what do we want to be, to what do we need to do in order to do that. The one point that I would add, two points, that I would add is, what programs, policies, and procedures does AMSA need? So, there's two aspects to that need. There's an implementing aspect, and there's a sustainment aspect. And all too often, we think about what we need to implement without thinking about how do we sustain that over the longer term. So, I would just encourage us to look at not only how to launch those things that we want to do, but how do we sustain them over time? And related to that is, while I don't think during strategic planning, you need to take a strict look on staffing and budget, there is an impact implicit in implementing programs, policies, and procedures. There's an impact on resources, staffing, and so at a strategic level, you need to think about, okay, if you're going to do these things, and you're going to implement them and sustain them, then there's an impact on resources, including staffing, budget, facilities, facilities in particular for us being an important aspect. So, that's really what I would suggest that we add into the discussion. I think it's probably implicit, and what was intended on this third bullet, I would just like it to be more explicit.
It's also somewhat our job, right? I mean, we get the feedback, and then we would need to have, we would need to figure out how to put all that together, to see what resources and, whatever they are, you know, human or capital resources that we would need. So, are you suggesting that we add it as part of asking the stake, for stakeholder input on their thoughts on that as well? Because this is really intended to be like the feedback that we would get from the stakeholders.
So, that's fair, okay? I guess you could obviously imagine asking a question that is too detailed in that sense. What my concern is, is by going out to stakeholders and asking for a vision, and what we need to do to implement that vision, to ask that question without any acknowledgement or recognition of the resources that are involved in that.
Yes, I understand now, yep.
Okay? I understand, that's why I started out saying, I understand that we're not going to be asking for them to provide detailed feedback on specifics of, you know, how many teachers do you think we'd need to have, or what increase in budget or facilities? But to sit there and say, in order, if this is your idea of what success, wildly successful looks like in terms of the things we need to do, then give a little thought to what you think, you know, what impact would that have on the current school's resources that we have available? Wildly successful is a great thing to aspire to, but I guess I, I'm suggesting we inject some reality into that as we ask that question.
That sort of forces priorities, too, when you ask, when you frame it in that way. Okay. What do people think of this timeline?
I guess I'm not clear on what the timeline is.
Neither am I. I wasn't clear with what Chris had said about this idea of, you know, letting it be a party for the next year, so that maybe there's some kind of.
This year.
This year. So, throughout the end of the year, so some kind of transition period where we don't push a lot of.
I think the party was meant, like, I think that was because initially, we had talked about trying to do another session, like April, May.
Right.
Right? And so then we were like, okay, we're going to try to push this into this year. And so, the party was.
Yes, they were reacting to, I came at them with, "Oh, and we're planning a meeting on April 8th."
The timeline you see here is reflective of the original goal, which was to try to do this at the end of the year, as fast as possible, but I think Chris makes a good point, that it's much better to wait a bit, think it through a little bit more. So, the timeline that you see there is not any longer relevant.
Okay, good. Does that concur with that thought?
Okay.
About the party?
That the party is like a this-year thing.
Well, last night was a party. Celebration continue, right?
You know, and I think that.
Yeah.
The tenor of the place has been a party.
Well, so if we're going to, if we're going to do this not by the end of the year, we do probably want to have this in hand by sometime in the fall.
Right.
So, we'll have this information in preparation for January.
Exactly. So, that would be the idea, to really kick off all of these in September, October timeframe, right, at the beginning of the new school year. So, there'd be that opportunity, then we can solidate the information, and we'd really have it for the next offsite. But what we would do between now and the beginning of the school year is really figure out, you know, how would we want to work this, identify who we would have to facilitate, those sorts of things.
You know, I don't know that there's anything wrong with posting these questions out in an earlier form, just to ask people to be thinking about it, and if they, they want to engage in discussions with other members of the AMSA community about that, I think that might be a healthy thing to do. If we know these questions already, to say, hey, look, we're going to be asking next fall for your input on this.
It would seem to me that it would probably be beneficial to start some of this before the school year ends, rather than just say, well, we'll get it going in the fall, promise you, just holding it and holding it, then trying to do a lot all at once then. Some of these things listed here at Advisory Council, at coffees, a particular single student feedback forum, some things could probably be done before we end school in mid-June, just so that it started, and people believe it really is unfolding, and not something that we're promising in the future. Think psychologically, it gives them, when they engage and think about it, it's now a living process, not just a promise of something to come.
So, we could do it sort of twofold, right, in these preliminary kind of, is doing these initial questions, and then maybe they would be, I mean, broader sessions later.
Correct.
Right, that's what you're suggesting.
But initiate it.
So, it would be sort of, that's an interesting point.
And I think combining Tom's and Ken's points, we do that, ask people, think about it, invite them to talk about it at the forums that we've already planned that exist. That does prime the pump, gets us moving a bit, but doesn't put us under the gun to create a plan. And whatever conversations, whatever information flows as a result of informal conversations in the next two months, will make whatever we do in September that much better.
Yeah.
So, we've already kind of started doing that. We're not really using all these three questions, but at the coffees that Ms. Lindsay and I have been to, and with the advisory councils, well, we're really trying to open up the conversations that we're having with the parents and with the members of the advisory council to say, to not really confine the conversation, but to really open up and to say, you know, what do we need to do at AMSA? What are our big goals at AMSA? So, we've started to have that conversation, but I appreciate the point, Tom.
Are we driving towards a September offsite, or are we driving towards the January offsite?
January offsite.
Yeah, that's disappointing to me. I have to be honest. I mean, that's disappointing. I mean, we'll have gone another year without having advanced the ball on strategic planning. I get that there's been a lot of change and things like that, but that would be disappointing to me. I'd really like to think that we could, you know, be driving towards something in September and in January, right? I think we've also talked about that doing this once a year has not moved the ball forward at all either, and that we need to make a bigger commitment to, you know, to strategic planning, because it's not getting done with once-a-year offsite, so.
Well, so, just to throw another perspective on that, I don't know that having a thoughtful, organized approach to gathering data towards that January offsite is necessarily not moving the ball forward. And certainly, if we're, if we do start the discussion, I don't know that rushing to have a meeting in September without the preparation of, you know, having people consider, formulate ideas, gather data on perspectives and so forth, I don't know that that's necessarily a good thing, so.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that everything that we've got in here about gathering information seems really good, and we should get it done before September, not get it done before January. That's what I was suggesting, but obviously, we need to reach consensus on what we want to do with this.
Can I make a comment? This is not really relevant to me, that I won't be part of this process in the fall.
Yes, you will, just not in that seat.
Well, not in this seat. I actually believe that the point Tom Tavern is making is a good one, I mean, really necessary. This one year, maybe it does deserve an extra strategic session. What could it do for you? You wouldn't be looking at the September one as a final result, a culmination point. It would be an early, effective, deep sounding board, for saying, what have we, what are we discovering so far, and what maybe do we want to rethink as we finish up for a second meeting in January? I think there'd be a lot of value for an in-depth look at what you have so far, and make sure that when you reach January, you're happy with the result, and don't find yourself halfway through the January meeting going, oh crud, maybe this, maybe we need more sessions. I don't think it does any harm for this one year to commit to this extra period, and make sure it gets done right. It could be part of the process, and have to be the culmination of the process.
Yeah, and just to be clear, my comments were not meant to say I was not supportive of pushing this to September. If we, as a board collectively, feel that we want to push towards that date, I'm fine with that, I'd be supportive of that. I'm just saying, I think that we can, that we, you know, a process has been laid out here, which is thoughtful, and in terms of gathering data and working towards getting people thinking about what a wildly successful AMSA looks like, so.
So, I would think that we would want to do sort of Tom's point, maybe not to satisfy completely, get talking to somebody to help us plan this thing, you know, relatively quickly, and do another board, half-day, full-day, either sometime this spring, or first thing in the fall. And so, it's not, I mean, part of what, so, I agree with Tom in part, that, yeah, boy, to postpone talking about it again until January.
End of January, no last week.
You know, I think it requires our focused attention, and one of the big problems has been we've not had focused strategic attention, except for those few hours in January, that we build into the process. Board time.
So, did you find having a facilitator there in January was helpful, or did you just find having downtime to talk with your fellow trustees about issues?
I actually found the facilitator very helpful.
I think so, absolutely.
I saw both, I think both, you know, both is what we're implying.
Frankly, I found it more useful to sit down with my fellow trustees and.
You know, what I found especially useful was the, and I usually hate surveys, God, I spend enough time with them, is that I felt that the survey they gave us actually did, had a very unusual experience, where I finished it and thought, hmm, I actually had a chance to say what I wanted to say. And having them do the conversation based on that was of tremendous use to me.
So, you mean the survey that we did in preparation?
Yeah.
So.
And the feedback that we got in advance, you know, putting the data together. We're all very concrete, and.
So, perhaps I should.
So, what are we suggesting, that we're going to have another strategic planning meeting in the fall?
Well, so, I guess what, I guess what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm hearing it wrong, is that the idea of not having discussions again as a board until January is a bit unpalatable, and I, if that's what Tom was advocating, I actually agree with him. If we're going to wait until January to have any more discussions, I guess I was envisioning that, you know, that we would be gathering information and having some discussions leading up to a more sort of process discussion in January.
Yeah, and it's not sequential either, it's kind of iterative. So, it's not like, all right, we're going to learn everything we're going to learn, and then we're going to make a plan. We're going to learn, we're going to plan, we're going to learn, we're going to plan, and have something that's durable at the end of the process. So, it's more like this, which means I think we can.
So, I think that brings back the original question that I just had. Are we going to have a strategic planning session in the fall? Is that something we're considering?
So, it sounds like that is something that we're considering, right? Like, late September probably would be about the timing, because I think that gives time for some of this to play out.
Right.
To get some feedback. I don't know, maybe if we think about it, maybe we could even get all of the feedback in September, early October, and we can have our, an offsite in, you know, early October.
Or maybe an offsite, because we're trying to run, we need to get a little bit of consultation about how.
How to do it, yeah.
How the process is going to be. One way I could imagine it happening is that we're doing this informal stuff now, so we're informed.
Right.
And then we sit down in the second week of September.
That's another possibility, yeah.
And agree to a plan, which has already been written out, so we don't have to invent it, that has deliverables for points during the fall, which culminates in a four-year plan that we can adopt in January.
Yeah, then the, then we're concluding in January, rather than kicking it off in January.
Concluding January, yeah.
It's almost like September would be the rough draft.
Yeah.
You know, in the beginning, because it, I mean, I only went to one, but it was a lot to bite off.
Yeah, it's just a lot, that's the issue.
It was a lot, and I'm afraid we're going to get to January, and we won't get a conference where we want to get a conference.
Well, I think that's Tom's point, because we've done that somewhat the last couple years.
Yeah, so, let's start in January, rough draft.
Yeah.
Work on it, and hopefully get something finalized, I'm sorry, let's start in September.
Yes.
Work on it, hopefully get something, you know, worked on through the fall, so we can come together in January and have something else.
Kind of done, yeah.
So, do we need to have a motion to say that we want to do a strategic planning session, an additional one, or we're perfectly fine?
No, no, we're fine. No, no, we're fine. Just schedule it within the calendar. Let's just talk about it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll schedule it and we'll work towards that. I'll work with Dr. Lewis and with Rick to, and Chris, you two, to sort of figure out how.
Maybe we can report, you know, we can give you drafts.
Yeah, we'll do lots of drafts.
In May and June.
I would just, I just would encourage us to think in terms of after our first board meeting in September as opposed to before it.
Yeah.
After our first board meeting in September?
Yeah.
Okay. Just because of the school kickoff and all.
Right, exactly.
And there's other just day-to-day business. Okay.
Although according to the schedule, that's that last week, so.
So then it may be the first week in October, but we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll figure that out, right. But it is clearly the idea of having another, a pre-planning offsite in, in late September, early October, right? That's.
Of course, this coming year is probably going to run so smoothly that we will have little to discuss at our September board meetings.
And there's that party thing.
Litigation might be done.
Litigation, there's still a lot of.
Maybe done, no, it may be done.
All right, okay. Oh, that took a little bit longer than expected, but that was good. All right, so let's move on to the next agenda item, which is task force updates, and I'm going to take off right now climate since Rick is not here, but he is going to work with the school sort of on, on looking at the Panorana surveys to run them again. They'll launch in May sometime, May, June sometime. Okay, collective bargaining, is there any thing that you can update on briefly?
Other than we are going to get together again on Monday night and we're going to meet around a few additional issues that I think will go very well. Mike, Larry and I are looking forward to meeting with the whole group and figuring out some of the things that, you know, kind of went awry, hoping that we can sum it up pretty quickly and it seems like we're all on the same page in terms of what our goals are for the most part, so.
That's always good.
That's very good.
Yep. Ken, did you have any updates?
Yeah, I have nothing further to report. I'm still on the hook to report out to Dr. Lewis.
Okay, good.
Sorry, did not use your full 20 minutes there, but.
Well, I actually thought that some of Rick's time would kind of roll over, but we took it up in strategic planning, so. Okay, governance committee update. Ev isn't here. Allison, could you sort of pitch in briefly or?
Yeah, start me off, Pauline.
It's really just the board committee calendar think is the main thing and then the policies that are being worked on.
So we changed the calendar for next year.
Yeah.
Because we've had, traditionally we've been doing the board meetings the fourth week of the month, and so we went back over the calendar and we feel that for some reason, and I think it's going to work a little bit better, we're going to try and do them the third week of the month. There's a couple of months that they won't be the third week of the month.
Other way around.
Sorry, sorry, third to the fourth, yeah.
I was going to say.
Because it'll give us more time to really have the subcommittee meetings and so that will take away the pressure of having them in the very first two weeks of the month. If we kind of push it back to the fourth week of the month, there's a couple of months that we're not going to be able to do that. We've made arrangements for that, so we're going to submit the new calendar and hopefully everybody will be happy with it.
So the new calendar, I mean, one of the things that we talked about, and I don't know why, it is just, I think all the committees found it very difficult this year when we were doing the third Thursday of the month.
Yeah, I would agree.
It just was hard, right? So moving to the, back to the fourth week of the month, the fourth Thursday of the month, but you'll note that we always run into sort of holiday issues and so what governance committee had put together was that there would only be one in November and there would not be a meeting in December, which, you know, is just craziness for everybody and we always have difficulty with that meeting. And then we would insert one sort of the first week in January instead.
Yeah, I like that.
Because of the, yeah, offsite, so that's sort of the proposal.
Yep.
Okay. So does anyone have like major objections to this? Because if not, then we'll.
No, I think it makes a lot of sense. I would just again warn, we need to have some flexibility around the October board meeting because.
Oh, good point.
We have to get, we have to get the auditors scheduled, so.
Yeah.
We could, we could try, but they're trying to close the books on all, you know, 40 different charter schools at that time too, so.
Yeah, but it's that week. All right, so we'll flag the October one, so I'll put these all in board on track and we'll flag the October one as September.
I can go, I can go to them right now, I just can't promise that they're going to be able to do that.
Is it October 15th, Tom, that they usually have to have these?
It's October 31st is, I believe, when we have to have them filed by, so it's crazy, right? So they, they do it a number of schools and they have.
So it's always that week, somewhere like the 23rd or 30th, you know, they're going to be.
Okay.
Subject to auditors, okay, great. Other brief governance committee update is just that we are pretty active in recruiting new board members too, so there are a couple of candidates and hopefully we will be in a position to vote candidates on in, at the June, May or June board meetings, at the same time that we are voting on our new parent and faculty rep.
Are there two, you said?
Currently there are two, yeah, sort of in the pipeline for June and then another for possibly later.
Fingers crossed.
Yep. Okay.
Just out of curiosity, what is the ideal number of board members?
We talked about this years ago. Ideally, we would like 13 at large, so 13 plus parent rep plus faculty rep, so 15 total, just because, you know, we've got four committees and then all the task forces, just the amount of work.
Right.
We've never gotten close to that number. We're at 12 right now, so.
Well, 10 plus.
10 plus two.
Two.
Yeah, we're at 10 plus two. So to get to 13 plus two is, is difficult. You know, these people are rolling on and off too. I mean, we're definitely losing Scott at the end of this year, so.
We'd like everybody else to abide by the Hotel California policy. When you check in, you do not check out, as some of us well know.
Yep. Okay, that's governance. Education committee.
So our April 6th meeting got canceled and so our next one is on May 4th. We also have tentatively sort of earmarked June 1st for a meeting, although I don't know, we're, that's one of the agenda items that they made for the meeting is to talk about closing out the, the year. At the last meeting, at the last board meeting, I had said that the education committee was hoping to be able to do an annual report in the June timeframe or to be able to do one this year, didn't think it'd be ready to do it before June. Of course, with the April meeting having been canceled, that might push that off even more. The two things that we're working on right now are goals for the, sort of, to look at our goals for the coming year, but also to take a look at developing a strategic framework that's aligned with the charter school performance criteria, and this would be something that we would offer up to the board to use as it assesses academic program success and faithfulness to the charter.
That would be great.
So.
No one actually had that.
And that's all I have.
Okay, great. All right, Tom, you're on 30 minutes.
Vote to approve the agenda, the budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion.
So similar to what we did last year, we've laid it out. So column G is what we're proposing for the fiscal year 2017, fiscal year 2018 budget, which runs from July 1st, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Column H is what we are projecting where we're going to end this year at 630, 2017. Column I is what the original budget for the year ending 630, 2017 was and just for historical purposes where we ended, 630, 2016 is what you see in column J. So as we've talked about before, over 94% of our, well, over 93% of our revenue, almost 94% of our revenue comes from tuition, okay? Tuition is based on the sending district of the students that we have. We are not a town where we set a property tax rate and set a budget. We are takers of what the tuition analysis by DEES is. Based on the latest figures from April 14th of this year, we are projecting a budget of $13,150,000 for our tuition for the coming year. That compares with the $13,207,000 we are projecting to end this year with. Our next line item is grants and donations. The majority of these grants and donations are entitlement grants that we get from the federal government. This also does include though our annual giving campaign. We have budgeted $40,000 of annual giving in the grants and donations line here for next year. We have $40,000 budgeted for this year. That campaign is underway and Chris will be talking about that, I'm sure. We, we took in substantially less than $40,000 in the June 30, 2016 year, so just point that out there. Investment incomes principally interest on our bank accounts. The nutrition program, the student programs, these next several line items, as I've talked about before, have a matching expense line item and the exercise here is principally to match the income with the associated expense around it. So this is the income that we take in from the student lunch program. You could see we're basing this number basically off of what we're projecting to have for this year. As we've talked about throughout the year, we're coming in substantially below the budget. That's not the end of the world because we're coming in substantially below what we had budgeted for an expense, right? So this is a self-correcting number. This next group of items here around student programs, you can see what we have in here, clubs, testing and assessment, prom, homework club, field trips, senior activities and then just miscellaneous student program income, very consistent with where we believe we're going to come in this year. Where we have differences, we've done a bottoms-up analysis, guidance has done a bottoms-up analysis of, you know, what we think we're going to be doing from a testing perspective and things like that, so that's why that number is, I want to say materially, it's $10,000 lower than what it was the year before, but that's, that's the, the number there. Clubs, we're projecting a little bit more. So at the end of the day, we're looking at total student program income approximately $155,000 versus $164,000 where we think we're going to end up this year. Next line item, athletic program income. Obviously, this is the money that we take in for each student participating in athletics, projecting $209,000. And we'll come back to athletics in more detail when we look at the expense line items on that one, but that's what we're projecting there. So again, bottoms-up budget was done by our athletic director of what he expected participation to be in all of the sports. We're adding a couple of sports for next year and I think it's known that we now have an affiliate relationship for football, so we are going to, people are going to be able to participate in football next year. We will not have a football team, but AMSA students will be able to participate in football. And then student transportation income. Student transportation income is related to everyone's favorite topic, the regional bus that we have at this point in time.
There you go, Ken, we've got another fun topic.
Yep. So we ended up with a very full bus this year and that drove the income, you know, matching very nicely the, the total cost for the bus, so that was, that was a wash at this point in time. Next year, if we go from one very full bus to two less full buses, it's entirely possible that bus fees will, you know, will have to go up, you know, to cover those costs. That brings us to total projected income right around $14 million. As I said, the tuition represents almost 94% of that. Any questions on the income side?
When do we know the tuition?
We don't. So the tuition gets revised throughout the year. So we continue to submit enrollment figures throughout the year and it adjusts at each time we submit those enrollment figures. So we have pre-enrollment information at this point in time, but who actually shows up in September, we, we don't know who's actually going to show up in September. When they show up, we submit that information and that factors into the number. So there's a tremendous amount of variability in that tuition number, but based on the best information that we have at this point in time, that's the number that, you know, we think we're going to have to be working with from a tuition standpoint.
But in September, we know.
No.
No. In September, we know what students are here.
Yes.
In September, we, actually I believe it's in October is the first time that we submit a roster to DEES and then they do a new calculation based on those students in October. We submit a roster, I want to say in December, which gets our tuition adjusted in January. We submit another roster in February that has another, you know, adjustment associated with it. So things adjust throughout the year. The tuition is driven off of the sending district of the student. Each sending district has a different reimbursement rate associated with it. So it's, the answer to your question, I mean, we, we don't know. Again, we are a taker on the tuition number. We, we don't set that number, we're not a town, so we are a taker on that number.
And it changes at least three times during the year.
And we can't predict, so does it change like retro?
Yeah, it does change retro.
So the price per student.
Yeah.
Changes and it like adjusts backwards, so if it changes in November, they adjust what they owe us for October, it's September as well?
They, they true it up is what they, what they do, but yes, they, we don't write them a check, but we sometimes have to true, true up and that just means that you're giving back late, you know, later. You're getting a less of a reimbursement later in the year. So you end up with a, you know, a trued-up number.
So you can't tell what it's going to be ever.
And one more thing, isn't it true too that the sending districts, what they pay per student changes as well?
Yeah.
That is correct, yes.
So let's say a town pays.
Has an override, right?
X, and that could change to Y or to Z, so there's lots of variables.
There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces, but this is, this is what DEES has given us at the, you know, at this point in time. Just to give you some perspective, when we were preliminarily working on the budget, the numbers that we got January, back at the end of January, they gave us a range. They gave us a low range for tuition and a high range for tuition. The range was 12.1 million to 13.3 million, so $1.2 million spread between the low end of the range and the high end of the range. So we were budgeting off of the midpoint of that range. Now, the latest information that we have is, you know, this 13 million number which is, you know, closer to the high end of the range, so we're in a better place than we were when we were working off of it in January, but.
But it could have just been just as easily the other way.
Absolutely. I mean, I can't, I can't emphasize that enough. So this year, we're in a very good place. We had budgeted 12.7 million, we're coming in at 13.2 million, we're 500,000 to the good on that. There have been years in the past, I don't believe there's been any years in the past that I've been associated with where we were, you know, 500,000 to the bad, but there have been years in the past where we were, you know, below, we were receiving below what our projection was. So this is the best information that we have available to us at this point in time.
Thank you.
Okay.
But that's a huge swing, right?
Salaries, we've broken out here between the collective bargaining unit and the non-collective bargaining unit. The teacher salaries had a 3% raise built into them. The non-collective bargaining unit has a 3% raise built into that as well. We have also, well, in the non-collective bargaining unit, we have held the head count the same as the prior year's budget, so there is no head count increase from this year's budget to next year's budget. In the collective bargaining unit, we've actually added five positions to, to the teachers. That was part of what allowed us to get to the, you know, the additional section, so additional teachers have been added in there. Substitutions, you know, is in this line item and then stipends which are associated principally with the clubs, some with athletic coaching, some with, you know, curriculum development and things like that. That all goes into, into the stipend number there that you see there.
So, so that has gone from 275 last year to projected a 355 this year to projected 435 next year?
That's correct.
Is there an explanation for that growth?
I'd have to go, Ken, I'd have to go back and look at it, but I mean, again, that's a bottoms-up number of all the stipends that are out there, so I'm com, I'm comfortable with what the number is.
I mean, I know that, well, we know that.
What drives changes in it?
One of the changes was like consistency in, between last year and this year, it was like consistency with the clubs and the coaches, so.
Homeroom.
It also includes, I believe it's a $1,000 increase to lower school homeroom.
Right.
Because homeroom teachers have, in the lower school, they have directed studies, so it's an extra. so it's an extra forty-seven minutes they have each and every day, which is quite a bit of time. So I think it's just to increase that a thousand dollars to, so I think it goes from four-thousand dollars to five-thousand dollars.
So that's all, you know, all different factors that are in that number. The next section is payroll taxes. Payroll taxes follow the salary. Salary's up, payroll taxes are going to be up. That's just based on the current tax rates there. Next line item is fringe benefits, which is essentially our health insurance, vision, long-term disability, and the like. On average, the rates for these programs increased by nine percent. Health insurance, which is the biggest number, increased by thirteen percent this year. So we're back to double-digit healthcare increases. Obviously, some of these went down, but on average, we're looking at a nine-percent increase in the cost of our insurance programs.
When's our insurance period? So when do we?
It's basically on the same fiscal year that we're looking at here.
So we don't have, is it seven-eight-four, is that a real price that we've been given?
Yes. So we have quotes at this point in time for next fiscal year. So these are, these are real, these are real costs is what we're expecting. Now, the only other thing on the healthcare that is a variable on all of these health cares is the number of participants in the plan, right? So we make an estimate on how many people that are going to be participating in the plan. We've seen fluctuations from year to year where we have more people in the plan than we expected or less people in the plan than we expected. We make the best estimate that, you know, that we can. But regardless, we're, you know, we're looking at a third, a nine-percent increase for like against like.
Who's our vendor?
We have a ton of different vendors that we use. So we have a broker, and then it's bid out to a ton of different vendors. Okay, professional development. Dr. Lewis touched on this a little bit. So for this fiscal year, for this fiscal budget, we are putting aside one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars for professional development. That's basically a hundred-thousand-dollar increase over what we are projecting to spend this year. It's almost a doubling of what we had budgeted as a school, you know, in the prior year. So I do believe, you know, we are committed to, you know, development of our faculty, and this is a good way to demonstrate that. The other cost associated with professional development, kind of come back to this here, but the other cost associated with professional development, increasing the number of days the teachers are out of the classroom is a substitute, you know, teacher effect on that too. So I'm not sure that we pointed that out, but substitute teacher costs going from a hundred to one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. So that's the, you know, way of looking at the total cost associated with, you know, the professional development commitment we've made for the coming year. We remain committed, again, to that, and would love to figure out ways that we can, you know, even increase that further. There is a tuition reimbursement program at the school for people to be able to take, you know, additional classes. Upon successful completion and appropriate grade, they get reimbursed. It basically works out to about one course for each person in the collective bargaining unit at a state, a state rate. And then there's additional money for people in the non-collective bargaining unit is what you see in that number. And I'd just point out, again, you know, from a budget perspective of what we had budgeted for tuition reimbursement to what we're actually seeing, we're not seeing anywhere near, you know, what is in the contract and what is available at this point in time.
Do you think that was because teachers may not have finished their classes yet that they're taking? So they haven't submitted yet for reimbursement?
I think we have, yeah, no, I'm pretty sure we have insights into who's taking, you know, who's taking the classes. And that forecast is supposed to be...
We're not expecting to get close to thirty-five.
We're not expecting to get close to thirty-five. Okay, the next section, instructional supplies, equipment. You see textbooks in here, you see supplies and materials in here. Each of the department heads worked with their departments to build a bottoms-up budget for supplies and materials. I can, you know, tell you how many pencils the art department has got on order. You know, that's the level of detail that's in the supplies and materials. Similarly, really with the textbooks, we just need to, you know, turn over textbooks, and they're obscenely expensive.
Tom, can I ask you, oh, yeah, special education?
Yeah, special education. I want to caution that, you know, the special education number is an educated estimate at this point in time, but that's all it is at this point in time. So again, we don't know exactly what our special education population is going to look like next year. We don't know exactly what their plans are going to look like. So it makes it very difficult for us with any specificity to predict what that cost is going to be. So the best estimate that, you know, we work off of is where we think we're going to end this year. But again, that'll be entirely dependent on, you know, what services that we have to provide. So it only takes one or two students that are in a one-to-one situation, and this number could go, you know, go up substantially. But based on what we know at this point in time, that's the number that we've got there.
So a big delta between budget and actual is not unusual.
That is correct.
I just want to make sure, so, but it's not like for one-on-one facilitators? It's actual supplies, like?
It actually, no, in this one, it's supplies, and it actually is some, you know, bringing in some outside consultants and things like that. It is not the salaries of the teachers in the special education in the area, but it is in the...
Like IAs or facilities?
Yeah, exactly. Student program expenses, I mean, if you remember the numbers that we had up on the income side of the house, this is the matching expense on the, this is the matching expense to those. So this is about our clubs, this is about, you know, our field trips and things like that, and this is back to the testing and assessment programs is what this is. So these numbers mirror up pretty well. And then again, you see the nutrition expense. Again, that is a direct reflection of the, you know, lunches and providing the help in the cafeteria and things like that. And we're basing it off of where we think we're going to end this year. Athletic expenses, there's a number of expenses in here. It's basically four kicks and supplies for the sports teams and reps that we have to, you know, pay for and things like that is what you see in here. We've broken out four kicks as athletic facilities, so that's providing fields for the teams. And then we broke out four kicks for physical education. Cost for physical education is pretty static year-over-year. The cost for the fields has gone up pretty substantially with four kicks at this point in time. I'd like to just flip over, try to give a complete picture of athletics that people understand where we're coming from with athletics. So top line here just shows what we're budgeting from an income perspective from athletics for next year, what we're forecasting, you know, for this year, and what the actual expenses in the previous year were. And then the revenue per sport, you see what we were charging for people to participate in the sports. We went from three-hundred to three-ten, and we're going to three-twenty. That's the revenue, the income that we take in. And then this represents all the costs associated with the athletics. So it's equipment, it's uniforms, it's, you know, the cost of the referees. It's the four-kicks field expenses that we saw on the other page. It's coaches' salaries, and it's the transportation associated with getting people to, you know, to and from events that goes into that, and you see what the total expense is. So again, AMSA remains committed to athletics, contrary to whatever rumors you, you know, may hear out there. It is not accurate to say that AMSA is not committed to athletics. So we are funding athletics out of our budget to the tune of, you know, two-hundred-thousand dollars is what the projection for next year is. We had forecasting for this year that it was going to be about a one-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-dollar loss on athletics, and the actual prior year was a one-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars. So I think, you know, we need to continue to look at, is this the best place to be spending two-hundred-thousand dollars at the Advanced Math and Science Academy? I think athletics are certainly a very important part of, you know, the culture of the school. But I think we need to, you know, consider what we're offering and make sure that this is, you know, the best place to be spending that money.
Are there any meaningful benchmarks? It would nice to be able, it would be nice to be able to say, you know, kind of, this is where we stand relative to others when the subject comes up.
You mean like how, that we are covering fifty percent of it or something like that?
Well, yeah, I guess, or, you know, like, what does a, what does a district school spend? I know that's not a...
Well, aren't we unique in that we have to rent space from four kicks? So we don't have our own facilities? Most towns have their own facilities, so...
But then we would deviate, and we could explain the deviation. But rather than have a, you know, some objective outside indicator that gives us a place to start when people say we're not spending enough or we're spending too much.
I would ask that the population, we compare those to be schools which are similar to us in the sense that they say a charter school, for example, as opposed to, you know, native.
Just a district.
Yeah, and I'm not sure where we'd go for a comparable.
I mean, it's something, you know, it's something that we can look into.
So I don't know that district schools are a good comparison because, you know, for us, every dollar that we spend on athletics is one dollar that we're taking out of the classroom, which is, I think, what Tom's point is here. And if we do that thoughtfully, that's fine. But we are subsidizing fifty percent of the athletic budget by taking money out of the classroom. The districts, the district schools don't have to do that. There's, you know, there is, you know, I guess in some level you could say that every dollar that goes into athletics is taken out of the classroom. But that's not, that's not necessarily true. But I would even say the other charter schools, I don't know that we, you know, would be a good comparison because different charter schools have different missions, and our mission does not, you know...
So again, I, not to cut you off, but I mean, I think coming full circle on this, and I'm certainly not suggesting or advocating this, but just, you know, talking about it. I mean, that's, you know, three or four teachers is what, you know, is what that is there in the extreme. Now, I think athletics is a great part of the AMSA culture, and I'm certainly not suggesting that. But I think it's part of the strategic planning process. It's something that we, you know, we may want to consider looking at, is we define what wildly successful AMSA looks like. And if wildly successful is having a Chinese language program and that requires four teachers, then, you know, we need to, we need to think about these things. And I just am trying to provide, you know, some context. You're asking for additional context, which I think is totally appropriate, but...
Actually, I like that, if, you know, it's the teacher equivalent would be a good unit of analysis.
Well, this is why I was appealing earlier that we need to be thinking about the impact on budget and staff resources and facilities when we're thinking about what wildly successful means. Again, just to use Tom's great example, if we want to have a Chinese immersion program, then two-hundred-thousand dollars would go, you know, a long way towards funding something like that.
I am not just, can we make sure that the video camera's over here? I am not suggesting that we end the athletic program for a Chinese immersion program. I'm just, you know, giving two extremes, and we happily end up somewhere in the middle.
So I'll happily take, I'll happily take that on because I think that, I think that is a discussion that we as a, as a community, and not just as a board, but as a community, need to have is about where we spend our money. So it is Ken Esterbrook who's saying this, not Tom Taverna.
I would come back to, we had a very impassioned presentation a couple of board meetings ago, and I fortunately don't remember what the acronym was, but related to, you know, to the arts, the performing arts at the school, right? I mean, that, we are not subsidizing the performing arts to the tune of two-hundred-thousand dollars, which would be, you know, something that would certainly be additive to the AMSA culture as well. If we were to start doing that now, we'll get to the bottom line on this budget. If we were to start doing that now, you know, something would have to give.
We'll be here all midnight, Tom.
Right. So we're not, we're not going to do that, but I did want to, I did want to present, you know, where we are from, you know, a total all-in cost on athletics. And quite frankly, I don't want to hear a lot of noise about we're increasing the fees from three-hundred-and-ten to three-hundred-and-twenty dollars. That's comparable with other schools, and it's, you know, it's not, it's not putting a dent in, you know, the deficit that we're, you know, we're looking at here. So we are not balancing the athletics budget on the fees that we're charging at this point in time. So we should pay the extra ten dollars and not make a lot of noise about it.
You know, it would be interesting to see, so you put on there revenue per sport in terms of the, you know, the per, the per person. There is inherent in that a subsidy. Your point is, is that the revenue's gone up ten dollars per sport, but the subsidy's gone up even further.
Correct.
The total subsidy is three-hundred dollars.
Well, no, the total, the total...
Per person.
Because per person, because if you take the four-twenty-two divided by the number of people or students to get to that two-oh-nine.
Right. So, and I think if I, I'm understanding what Lucy's saying. If we take the two-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars that we're expecting...
Divide by three-twenty.
Divided by the three-twenty, that shows that we anticipate six-hundred-and-fifty kids participating in athletics over the course of next year. That's down from seven-hundred-and-eleven that we're projecting are, you know, going to be participating this year, back to somewhere around the levels that we saw in the previ, you know, the previous year.
And if you take the four-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand and divide it by six-hundred-and-fifty-three students? We're subsidizing three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Yes.
Isn't it nice to have Lucy here?
Can you, so what, so what was last year's subsidy?
Long way too, but it's good to have, right, a second person. It's great.
We're subsidizing it.
Math is the language.
So the subsidy is, so the, so the per, the revenue's going up from three-ten to three-twenty, but the subsidy is going up?
Even more.
Even more.
Yep.
Actually, can you create one more line? Just do the six-forty-five minus the three-twenty, then we can see the subsidy, then we can see it across, right?
For the rest of us, right.
For the rest of us who can't do math in our head.
For the long, Tom, Lucy people, there we go. How much are we paying, Tom, the school?
Yes, so the subsidy this year was two-fifty a person, and it's going up to three-twenty-five a person.
I think it's important information to have.
And do we ever?
Yeah, we've never really published that number.
Do we ever subsidize the three-hundred-and-ten dollars that students pay?
Yes.
Do we provide scholarships for?
Yes.
That's great.
Yes.
That's actually a really good number.
Is that number in there?
I'm sorry, I don't...
The scholarships?
Yeah.
No.
That's not, we...
For some number of kids, we waive the fee.
Correct.
Right, so the number's not really six-fifty-two. The number's probably six-fifty-five, right, or six...
Okay.
Thank you.
So I think that's enough on athletics.
Yes.
Again, I think it's a...
Yeah, let's talk about uniforms for a while.
Well, uniforms go into the one-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-dollar cost now. I know what you were talking about. So that's the athletics picture. Student transportation, so student transportation is the regional bus plus any field trips plus anything associated with athletics is what goes into student transportation expense. The revenue side only comes from the regional bus. The expense side comes from all of those other things, okay? Lease cam and taxes, so our lease payments, the property taxes that we pay associated with the lease and the common area maintenance costs, pretty comparable to, you know, what we're projecting we're going to end up on this year. Basic differences in the maintenance costs have actually gone down. Facilities cost, this is janitorial services, you know, this is, you know, painting classrooms and things like that, projecting an increase over where we think we're going to be ending up this year. Utilities, power bill, gas bill, pretty much in line with where we were. Information technology, this is not, this is not like our computer lab. This is more like a laptops for the teachers or something like that. And costs for us being connected to the internet and things like that are what are going in here. And then consultant spend also went through information technology costs. We're looking at adding organically a position that was in this year's, in the year ending June thirty, two thousand and seventeen's budget that was not filled. We are contemplating filling that in next year's budget and not using a consultant. So that's why that number's down a little bit. Okay? Non-instructional supplies, pretty flat year-over-year. Advertising and marketing, this is, includes the cost for the alumni event. Our auditors, just as a reminder, you know, we have a requirement as a charter school to have an independent audit conducted, and so the costs associated with that, which is what we were talking about for the October board meeting. We'll present the results there. Our legal costs, again, we are projecting a decrease going into next year. We have a trial this year, but we do, in fact, expect an appeal. But we expect a lower expense rate on appeal certainly than the trial. So that's why we've budgeted less there. Other operating costs, insurance expenses. So these insurance expenses aren't the healthcare and vision expenses, but these are the general liability, workers' comp expenses are what are in that insurance expense number. And then our depreciation expenses associated with capital items. So again, just to try to explain this, I think I've tried... with capital items. So again, just to try to explain this, I think I've tried in the past, I'm not sure how successful I've been, but for the sake of argument, if we were to spend, if we were to spend $60,000 on a bus and we thought that the bus was going to last us for five years, that's really 60 months is five years, we would be depreciating the bus at $1,000 per month is what we would do with the bus. When you buy that bus, you do not incur the cost on the day you buy the bus. You incur the cost over the expected life of the bus, which would be the $1,000 a month. So when we spend money on capital items, we spend real dollars in, you know, this current year, but the expense is recognized over the life of the item. That is different than when you pay somebody's paycheck every month. That is different than when you buy some paper clips. You just expense the paper clips when you buy the paper clips. When you buy something with a long life, you expense it over the expected life of the asset is what you do. So that goes into the depreciation expense. So that brings us to the capital budget. These are things that we are proposing to spend money on. We will put them on our books as an asset. We will take the, we will spend $11,000 on a spectrophotometer. We'll take that out of cash and we will put a spectrophotometer on our books for $11,000 and then we will write that down over the life of that asset and that expense will be recognized through that depreciation line item out there. So these are the capital things that the school is looking to spend money on in next year's budget. Lab equipment, putting rubber treading on a couple of the stairwells, tiling over where we have carpet in a couple of classrooms, redoing classrooms. So classroom furniture, we redo a couple of classrooms every single year so that, you know, we aren't facing having to replace all of them at the same time, so we rotate that through. We are also contemplating a major change in the, in the nurse's office and maybe Dr. Lewis, you could explain what's going on there and why we're, why we're doing that.
Sure. There's, right now, the nurse has an office in the upper school and an office in the lower school and she serves, you know, 960-plus students. So she felt, and I certainly agree, that it would be much better to have the nurse's office in, what is it, 1-
100.
In 100, which is, right now, it's a big art room. It's a big enormous room. It's got a bathroom, it has-
Two bathrooms.
Two bathrooms, right. Boys' and girls' bathroom, has a big storage facility, has lots of advantages. One, it's enormous, so she can have all her supplies in there. She can have the, both nurses can be in the room at the same time. Kids have privacy in that room, so we've had, you know, when, when a child is sick, privacy's important for that kid if they're throwing up or if they have some other issue. You know, and at this point, they've been throwing up into bags or they've been running to the public restroom, which is, you know, terrible. So they'll have a nice private restroom for the kid. And then also, another benefit of that room is that if there is a serious issue, an ambulance can park right at the door of that room and load it into the ambulance. So for the health of the kids, having that big room is a huge advantage for the nurse and for the students as well.
Okay. And then in the computer hardware, so these are larger, you know, larger ticket items, new switches, wireless network maintenance. We replace one-third of the staff's laptops every year. That's the cost associated with that. Because of the MCAS testing having to be online next year, we have to have enough Chromebooks for the students to be able to take the MCAS, so that's going to require seven additional carts. We have a number of different computer labs and we refurbish those again on a rotational basis so that none, the equipment in the labs, none of it'll be older than four years. It'll be anywhere from, you know, brand-new to three going to four, you know, four years old. This is a year where we have to do two instead of one. Upgrading fiber between the buildings. So those are, those are all the things that we're suggesting that we spend capital dollars on coming to the tune of $287,000. Those will then go on the books and then those will be subsequently depreciated over the lifespan of each of these items. Each, each of these things have a different appreciable life based on how long it's going, you know, expected to last.
Thank you, Tom.
So coming all the way back to the summary budget, we expect to be, total expenses, $14,035, bringing us in at net income, a surplus of $17,000 for the year. So that's like point 001%, I think is what, you know, is what that is.
A bunch of margin.
And so that's, that's this year's budget. So I'd entertain any questions that people might have on, you know, this year's budget, how we arrived at it, capital budget or, or anything else, or otherwise. Well, let me, let me stop there. So let me answer any questions that people have.
I don't have a question, but I just want to thank you for having separated out the union representative personnel from non-union. A number of teachers through the year have been looking forward to that and I'm, I know that they'll be happy if this has happened. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If there are any questions, I'll make a motion. We accept the budget.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay.
Great job, Tom.
Nice job, Tom. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Leanna. Thank all the department heads and thank Dr., you know, Dr. Lewis. I think, again, I think we've got a, a good budget here that represents our commitment to, you know, development for, you know, for the teachers and is, you know, still fiscally responsible in that we, we do have, you know, the minimus surplus that we're looking to roll into, you know, the future year. So I'd like to thank all of those people that were involved in this.
So one thing I, I'd like to add while we're sitting here talking about capital expenses, for, you know, a couple of years ago, I'd mentioned that a lot of the scientific organizations, engineering organizations around here, surplus equipment is-
Yep.
That, you know, they just get rid of.
Yep.
And they, of course, don't know what to do. There aren't typically nonprofit organizations that they, you know, that they can go out and give this stuff away to, where they don't always know about it. You know, if we wanted to expand, you know, our ability to, to go out and, and procure this, we might want to put together a wish list and-
That's a great idea.
And publicize this out to local organizations and say, you know, if you've got these kinds of things, you're thinking about surplus and we certainly would like to be considered.
So I, I think that's a, you know, I think that's a great suggestion, obviously. Free is good. You know, it's, it's an extension to a certain extent of what we're doing with GE at this point in time. And in, in the past, we have received in-kind contributions of, you know, scientific equipment. We have in, in the last several years. Quite frankly, I think that's a, you know, a result that we haven't been doing as much community outreach as we had in the past. I think there are some very good reasons why we were not focused externally. We were very focused internally and I'd like to think that, you know, as a byproduct of a better internal environment, we, we have some resources that we could devote to, you know, to focusing on those kinds of things extra.
Well, and you could put together, you could put together a webpage and say, here's what our wish list is, and then publicize that and ask people to, you know, ask companies to visit and so forth, so.
I think would also be a good family engagement opportunity because that's the kind of thing that a lot of, well, some number of parents will come up and say, gee, I can get, or I can help to get.
Yeah.
And to organize it so that-
I don't know how many people have spectrometers sitting around their house. Laptops, obviously.
Yeah, but my wife probably has access to spectrometers sitting around at Thermofisher.
Here's the, here's the difference. When you're going to a company, they're surplusing 20 computers all of the same kind, which makes maintenance much easier. I'm not suggesting you don't.
I'm suggesting there are parents who work at those companies who can facilitate that transaction.
Yeah.
Yeah, and a number have reached out to me throughout the year with different things that they're getting rid of, that they want to know who to reach out to.
That's a, that's a great point. So we should do that.
Right. So Ken, give me the $40,000 that we put in the budget and the forecast.
So, Chris, have any other questions on this?
As I said, Ken, as I was looking at Chris, but Chris, Chris, as we segue to fundraising development, give me the $40,000 we have in this year's forecast and next year's budget.
I'm cautiously optimistic.
So we can stay on chalk with our time.
I'm going to give you more than I gave you last year.
I can tell you, the education committee doesn't have $40,000.
Okay.
So, the campaign has kicked off. An initial communication went out from Honders and Pauline to the community. Maureen Evans has been doing a great job of kind of pumping up on the website and stuff like that. Deliberately timed for right after the U.S. News and World ranking, apparent testimonial from Sharon Hammel is going out.
That already went out.
Okay, so it's going out. And that was timed, Maureen timed that as a one-two punch. And we'd, I'd like to-
I think it was in yesterday's answer.
Yeah. I'd like to reserve 15 minutes on our May agenda for the solicitation of the board.
For the solicitation of the board. Okay.
I already sent my money in, Ken.
Solicitation of the board.
Right. Well, to thank Tom and solicit the rest of the board.
Okay.
And that's my report.
Great. So that is good. All right. Do we have any other topics in open session? Any other agenda items people would like? I now have on the May agenda that, we've got 15 minutes for Chris. Okay, if not, then we will go into executive session to discuss pending litigation and strategies for negotiations with represented personnel. We will invite Dr. Lewis to join us and we'll, Tom, you will need to recuse yourself for the second half.
That's right.
Okay. You need to make a motion and then do roll call, right? Yeah, you need to make a motion.
So moved.
Okay. I'll second. All right, roll call vote. Chris? Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Okay, so we are going into executive session. We will not come back into open session. Okay. Eight twenty. Wow.